April 26 to order. The first item of business is a public comment. We were not notified of any public comments for this evening. I'm just double checking to see if I missed any in the last few hours. No, we're good. All right. Then the first order of business we have is a town meeting consultation. And I see Mr. Levy here. Mr. Connolly. You would come on up. I watched the FinCon meeting last week. I'm thinking it was last week. You made a decision to come consult and you would like to talk about Emory Grover. And so let me turn it over to you for that discussion.
Definitely. So Emory Grover is one of the topics. We also made two recommendations to supplement appropriations in Article 10 and in Article 31 with some unallocated free cash that's available. We can start with with Emory Grover certainly. So the the thinking is that currently there's $4.5 million of free cash that's in the warrants to be used for the Emory Grover project plus a million dollars of overlay surplus. The thinking is with many building projects that we do, most building projects, the idea is that the benefits are distributed over time. They're going to last decades. And so if the benefits are distributed over time, then it seems justified to have the cost distributed over time by issuing debt so that, you know, people, you know, several years from now can pay for it in part. And the cost is not borne solely by the residents today. So that was the thinking. We haven't taken a position, a firm position on it, but many members felt that that was a prudent approach.
John, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So I think if you add up the free, if you look at the warrant and the amount of cash that will be going towards it, there was 4.5 million of free cash, a million from the overlay surplus fund, and then 2 million for CPA free cash. So we add those up, that's about seven and a half million. It is seven and a half million for cash that would go towards the capital projects, almost 40% of it. And it's our thinking that that's really extreme and that it would be more prudent to have some of the free cash be available, put into the debt service stabilization fund so it would be available at a later date for other projects that might be looking for borrowing capacity, whether it's schools, whether it's DPW, whether it's purchasing land or any other types of things. And so it's basically making it available for for those projects in the future by having it go there instead of the free cash all being put into this place at this point in time.
And is the FinCon committing to putting it in the debt service stabilization fund?
That's what the expectation is that we're going to do. We can't do it now because it's not on the warrant. So we need to put it in the warrant. It would be done next year, but we would earmark it for an asset to earmark for the debt service stabilization.
So there are, I spoke with Dave on Thursday, there are a couple of other considerations. I think Dave is the director of finance. By by using the debt for a greater amount of debt for the project rather than free cash, it certainly wouldn't make us exceed our debt limits on this particular project. There are, I think, one in particular project that is the Elliott and Broad Meadow Rooftop Replacements that had been expected to be funded through debt next year. So we may have to think about how how that would be funded if we're not, if we use that for Emory Grover. So part of the free cash may have to be used for that. We would have to plan that out.
Dave, could I ask you to come up and just ask if you have any advice for the board at this point? I do want to know that Peter Pingatord joined us as well. Peter, of course, is here from CPC, which the funding, CPC funding is not impacted by this discussion, but CPC has weighed in on it because there is some CP, the Community Preservation Act funding for this particular article and this item.
To frame the discussion, first off, we're discussing, we have the availability of cash in effect because for several years we have not been expending all the free cash that's been certified in part to have contingency funds should COVID-19 added costs that we could not address within our annual resources of the operating budget and and state and federal funds weren't sufficient to meet those needs. Happy to report, of course, that the state and the federal government have helped in addressing some of the expenses that have been incurred and steps that the departments have taken have made it possible to get through these several years. So the free cash that we had not been expending has been rolling over and we have, as has been said before, a higher level of free cash than we would normally assume. In looking at and taking into consideration the future capital projects that will require an investment in the hundreds of millions of dollars, which will be a challenge to work within our debt policies, we were looking at opportunities to try to reduce debt issuance, the issuance of debt if there were resources available and hence the town manager's recommendation to use the unencumbered free cash for the project, which would lower the debt service impact. In subsequent conversations and with the finance committee, they were, they certainly explained why they were looking at having this project funded from the general fund 100% by debt service, but also mindful that just using the funds for recurring expenses probably wouldn't be a prudent step. And therefore, in recognition that we'll be issuing debt for other projects, that setting these funds aside specifically to deal with capital projects and to deal with our debt capacity issues in the future is is a position that is defendable. The one thing that you would be giving up is by not using the cash now and doing 100% debt is is a time cost to money and of course, $5.5 million of principal deferred and hence no interest paid is more valuable today than it will be in several years. But nonetheless, as long as the funds are reserved specifically for managing our capital program and trying to move sensibly with our debt, it it would be doable either way.
Thank you for that. Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah, what are, may I?
You may, Mr. Levy.
So what are the costs of borrowing the 7.5? We didn't use the free, the available cash. We wanted to borrow it, as you suggest. What would that cost be?
So in other words, it would be, we would be borrowing an additional 4.5 million. Instead of having to pay for cash, we would be borrowing.
Correct, okay.
And we're still paying in cash on the project. 3 million would be going into the project, 2 million from CPA, then a million from the overlay surplus fund. So the calculation, Dave, on the, is it depends on over what period of time, Kevin, on that?
Yeah. When it's all done, how much extra interest do we or have we paid?
Would we be paying?
Over, if if we didn't use any cash on the general fund side specifically, it's the CPC component, I think everybody's in in agreement and it's much more complicated to change that which appears in the warrant. On the general fund side, if we were to use $5.5 million in cash, we're effectively, based upon my conservative interest rates, saving over 20 years about $4.3 million in interest expense.
Okay.
Now, if I heard correctly, I think what is being asked the select board to consider is to reduce the $5.5 million in cash down to $1 million in cash. So that $4.5 million that would now be borrowed would be approximately $3.7 million more in interest expense over a 20-year period at 7%. Just as a reminder to the board, the most recent bond the board approved earlier in the month had a interest rate of 5%. So that would be another variable. And if if these bonds were at 5%, it'd be several hundred thousand dollars less than the number I just told you.
Of course, and part of the variable is, is you look forward, right? If the interest cost is higher when we actually have to, when we use cash in the future, but the interest cost is higher, you know, how does that offset? Everybody's running with variables. Matt, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I understand the concept, but I just think you're talking about, like you said, 3.7, 3.5 million dollar cost of doing this. And I think no matter what we agree to, we have to come up with some type of policy because I know in the past, when looking at the fire station, Memorial Park, we really tried to put cash into that in order to reduce our debt and, you know, reduce the debt service and give us flexibility for debt. So I think, you know, the direction I'd like to go with, I think this is a good plan. I don't think at this time, and this is a project to do it with. But moving forward, I do want to understand if we're going to try to pay down debt or put cash so we don't have to borrow as much or if we're going to try to have to borrow as much as we can in order to add to the stabilization fund. I think that's a conversation for another day. I do wholeheartedly support the debt stabilization fund. We have things coming up, as we know, projects that I want to put in and build that fund up. I'm just afraid, and you mentioned, Mr. Levy, about, you know, maybe the roof or other things that we'll now have to swap because now we're squeezed out of debt and that might have to turn to cash. I just think the timing of this, while I think the idea, I understand it, I don't think this is a project to do it on, but, you know, I take it under advisement. I know this board will, but those are the concerns that I'm having at this time.
So I think it is fair that we had been coming for an approach where we'd been thinking about using more cash upfront. That had been the agreed upon approach that we were all working on. So this is a change as Matt identifies, you know, a shift in that policy. It's a shift, right?
So, no, in terms of agreed upon, I mean, I don't think the Finance Committee, the Select Board had discussed that particular approach specifically. I I know that personally, I have had kind of a change in thinking recently that earlier on, I had thought that perhaps we could use more cash upfront for this project to save our debt capacity for other projects. My current thinking now is that this is, town meeting wants to move forward with this project, so we should treat it like other building projects and not treat it as a special project that's funded largely through cash. So that, my thinking has changed a little bit. I don't think that necessarily was was fully fleshed out before that, though.
Yeah, I think because when you look at it, what it would be is about 40% of this project would be funded through cash, which is never been, that percentage has never been done on a project. And whatever, a project like this, which is a 50 to 75-year project, the contemplation when it was passed and as it is now is that it would be borrowed. So it's not like it's a shift in what is being presented to how the the project is going forward. And what this does is by allocating the money to the debt service stabilization fund is that it makes this cash available, which is fortuitous at the time and place. It could be different. It could have been different last year before this year. It shares that and makes it available to all kinds of capital needs that we have, just not necessarily this project. So that's, that's why we're proposing this and that's why we think this is in the town's best interest.
I think that, you know, the town does have capital needs that, and we all know several of them that are laid out over the next year, so it's not new information in that sense. But I do understand it's a new change in approach from from the FinCon suggestion.
Yeah, so, yep. So thank you all for being here. So my question had to do a little bit about the burden to the taxpayers and what would the difference of cost be to put this all where it is now as opposed to spreading it out and having not just the need of residents of now pay, but the need of residents of the future? How much, as far as percentages, what does that look like is, you know, how you're dicing that up for future? And then how far in the future were you thinking when you say that, just so I understand?
So I think what I understood from Mr. Davidson is that the additional cost of $4.5 million as debt rather than cash would be about $3.7 million of additional costs to the taxpayer over 20 years.
Okay, over 20.
Is that what I understood?
That would be the interest expense.
The interest expense, right.
But the annual payments, because rather than using $5.5 million in cash today, but rather amortizing it, borrowing and amortizing it over the 20 years, the annual debt service will be higher each year because you're repaying the 5.5 and it's still the same $5.5 million. But the true incremental cost is, is the interest that you're paying on the money that you borrow rather than just using your cash resource. And that's.
That's the 3.7.
That's the 3.7.
Over the next 20 years.
Over 20 years.
Okay, correct. As opposed to what it would be right now. So that's what their approach, the FinCon is talking about.
Well, yes. So that FinCon is talking about would result in the additional interest expense over the next 20 years, but it would result in future taxpayers sharing more in the cost of the and the expense of the project than people today just bearing more of the brunt because we've used today's cash for that purpose.
Having $4.5 million in the debt service stabilization fund for projects that we'd like to do but don't have the borrowing capacity, do so under our debt limit, our debt limit. So it's basically saying that we're making available to the future and future projects this money now instead of putting it all into this one project.
Thank you.
Hi, did you have any questions?
I'm just wondering about the, the impact that borrowing this money will have on the potential for borrowing for the school projects. I guess I'm just, it seems if we have the cash now to hold it and wait for a future I I'm not as familiar with all of this as everyone else, like, I think. But it just seems like if we have the cash and we know that we have something on the horizon, it worries me that the impact will follow on that project.
So we will have used more of our debt capacity now.
Yeah.
All right, that we will not be noncompliant with our debt policy as a result of this decision, but we'll be closer to that edge, right, that we talk about as as being our debt policy, which means that when we evaluate the school projects, right, at that time, presumably we may apply the cash.
I mean, it would be one thing if we didn't have something looming on the horizon. I just don't want to make a decision on a smaller project that will put a larger project at risk if that's, if that was the outcome.
It's the opposite. What we're doing is making that larger project more available and potentially available by having this money in the in the debt civilization fund that can go towards that or any other, wherever that larger project is.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, just to close, again, I understand the concept and we talked about, you know, using cash in our Memorial Park building, I think is a perfect example. I don't know how much cash we put, but it was quite a bit. We had the athletic stabilization fund. The whole idea was to reduce the debt burden. The fire station, we tried to get under, I think it was 70 million, by putting cash towards it just so it wouldn't be a large burden on the override to the taxpayers. I understand, wanted to add to the stabilization fund. I just think that this right now is a prudent plan based on how we've been going along in the past. So again, I do hear what you're saying, no decision is going to be made tonight, but those are my concerns along with the the cost of interest that will, the cost of town, which I don't think is necessary since we have the cash. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. I don't actually know, we haven't looked at various projects to see, you know, how they stand with the percent of cash, but I think there have been other projects that have greater percentage of caches, of cash than this particular project if we look at it on a percentage basis, you know? So I think that's a little bit of a red herring in the discussion and I think the real question is, are we looking at using our free cash now? Do we put it in the debt stabilization fund? I feel better if I actually had a commitment for sure that it would be used that way, but I do feel like it's in concert with the principles that you generally apply not to use this one-time cash for recurring expenses. So the odds are good that it would go to the debt service stabilization fund. It would be easier if that could happen now, but I I get it that I can't. So I I thank you for this discussion. Let's move on to the next item and here.
I believe the next item is Article 10. So there, as of March 30th, 2022, the balance of free cash minus the amount of free cash proposed for allocation in the warrant was $1,052,126. And so this was additional funds that the Finance Committee feels we could use to put into various funds that are either underfunded right now or we could use them to get closer to the target amount sooner. And so Article 10 budget, we felt that adding a million dollars to line item five, which is the retiree insurance liability fund or OPEB, would be prudent. Right now, it's funded at approximately 35%, which is certainly higher than other towns, but we can certainly top that up a little bit.
Okay, great. Any questions? I mean, this is something that makes sense to me. I understand that we have this additional free cash, as Dave described, that has been building because we've been frankly, the beneficiary of some other funds from the state and from the federal government, which has been plus, and this is certainly a reasonable.
Right. What we're trying to do is look within the warrant to see where some appropriate places would be. To us, it was OPEB and then the athletic facility fund, which is in the warrant to put another, add additional 52,000 there. So those are the two places in the warrant we thought were appropriate to to have those funds put. And to do so, we'd need to make an amendment on on both fronts, Article 10 and then Article 31.
My opinion is those are both great suggestions, but any other questions?
I like that.
I'm sure it's the Finance Committee asking the Select Board to amend its article.
So I I offered that suggestion since you are the proponents of Article 31, that perhaps if you're in agreement, one of, we would like to offer that.
So when we're going through the warrant tonight, we can go through and make that amendment.
I think for planning purposes for Article 10, one of the members of the Finance Committee will offer that amendment.
Sure. Okay. Great. So we'll be coming back to talking about the article for Emory Grover later tonight. I'm not sure that there's any kind of immediate consensus that we do want to make that change, but we'll let people sit with it for a little bit longer. We will have a discussion later tonight. I understand that you were anticipating coming back to the question again tomorrow evening, I guess.
We'll discuss it because actually the Finance Committee has not yet made its final recommendations. This will form a part of that.
All right. Then I thank you for coming tonight. You know, you've certainly given us some things to think about. I'm not sure that one, it's, one approach has a significant advantage over the other. So I'm just trying to think through all that.
No, and I think, you know, as we look into the years ahead, I think when we, these, it's always hard when we're doing these things at the end. It's not easy for us and it's not easy for you. And I think that this is one where, and I understand the concept of putting the free cash towards it, but all of a sudden, when you really looked at it, it, this one at least to us, shown differently. So I think maybe when we're doing our planning, like in January or so, when we're really starting in the warrant together, we should really look at these things collectively as a group and we can have those discussions in January and February as opposed to April 26th. So and that's, I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, it's just the way it all played out. And so I think on a going forward basis, that would be a good practice for all of us to engage in.
I think that's absolutely true, John. And part of the, part of the piece that I'm thinking about right now is it's late to make this kind of a change for town meeting and to what degree does that introduce another level of confusion? And then you're trying to explain why you're making the change and how does that add to the overall discussion in this moment? And I'm not sure that it's actually beneficial because presumably we'd end up in the same place. Emory Grover is a project that needs to be done. And if the different funding approaches, to some extent, are six of one, half dozen of another, you know, they they both have slight variations to them and some changes in how we go forward, but I'm not sure that it's as significant to merit a change at this particular hour. I think going forward, having a discussion in January would be much more effective so that we can try and get on the same page.
It would be.
Yeah.
I could just add, I spoke at the beginning about a policy, I think, if we're going to start, I think we should look at this again and how much, if a project does come off and you have X amount of cash and either a percentage or amount, what triggers it? And I think it'd be nice to to talk about that and come up with something.
Right, because you need to balance today with the future, right? And so I think that's what we're trying to do. And just what, you know, what is available today doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be available in the future. And so we're trying to make sure that the future is accessible to all of us as we hope it will be.
Totally. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Our second agenda item this evening is Arbor Day proclamation. Ed Olson. Ed and I were a team last night at the board meetings. Thank you for joining me.
Thank you.
Saving me on occasion, yes. Good evening. So my understanding is that we have an Arbor Day proclamation. So if you would like to talk for a moment about the tree program that we have and how pleased that we are to have it and the benefit that they bring.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the board. So yes, Arbor Day, it's a special Arbor Day this year. Miles helped me put this proclamation together. It's a little bit different than in years past because this year is a special year. It's our 150 anniversary of Arbor Day, so 150 years. So a big day for all of us. We at Parks and Forest, we really look forward to Arbor Day every year. We have a long history dating back to my predecessor, Lance Remsen, and then his predecessor, John Cusick, a history of celebrating Arbor Day with the school children in town. So historically, we've already celebrated with second grade classrooms. This year, we're going to be celebrating at the Broad Meadow Elementary School. And we'll be celebrating with four second grade classrooms and then the kindergarteners will be paying a visit as well. So that's always special. It's always fun. And it's a similar program every year. We talk a little bit about the significance of the day, the history of Arbor Day, and we open up to questions to the kids about benefits of trees, which is always fun to hear the things that come from the kids. And then we plant a tree with each class and the kids get to get their hands dirty to actually see how a tree is planted properly. And and that's usually led by our forestry foreman, Mike Logan. So Mike is 62 years old and I think he'll be looking to retire in the next couple of years. So I think every Arbor Day we can celebrate with Mike is special. This year especially, especially because of the the big anniversary and we'll be at Broad Meadow and we're going to have our state rep, Denise Garlick, join us with her staff. And she has a special connection to the school, as you probably know, but her son, Andy, is the principal there. And then later in the day, we will be celebrating again and hopefully I'll see you all around 2:30 Friday afternoon. We're going to gather at the Heights Fire Station, Fire Station 2. We planted an elm tree last week and that elm tree was a gift from the Exchange Club as part of their 75th anniversary, which will be later this fall, but we thought it would be nice to gather there on Arbor Day and take a picture and talk about the significance of that tree. And that was a project that was brought forth over the past couple of months to introduce an elm tree in a significant spot in town so that if people entered towns, they could see this tree of symbolism. And again, it would be a Liberty Elm tree. So I thank the Exchange Club for that generous gift and I look forward to seeing hopefully all of you there Friday afternoon for a photo and and a couple of words. Beyond that, we will be celebrating further with students of Paulard School, just not Friday, and we'll be doing one last celebration with Pat Day and the Needham Children's School. So the kids are going to do a field trip to Riverside Park and we're going to plant a tree in the park there. We celebrated at Riverside Park for several years now with the neighborhood. I have a special connection there with the neighbors. And if you don't know Riverside Park, it's a forgotten little pocket park, not forgotten in my heart, but a lot of people don't know about Riverside, but it's right on the edge of town and it's got a great passionate neighborhood. So we're looking really forward to all those events. So thank you for hopefully signing the Arbor Day proclamation tonight.
Thank you.
It'll be a big week.
Yes.
I was going to say, thinking about Mike Logan retiring, I mean, there's so many people that you think, how can we have Needham without that person? He's another one of those.
Yeah, we're really fortunate to have Mike. In fact, for the past year, we had a retirement last year, Arbor Day, we lost Brad Bottomley, who was a certified arborist. He had come over to Needham shortly after I arrived 11 years ago and Brad was from Hartney-Grahammont, but Brad was an incredible presence. He worked till he was 70 years old, then retired. He got 10 years of municipal experience to get a little bit more pension. But Brad was a wealth of knowledge. He worked in trees his whole life and really, I'm a certified arborist, but I'm only a certified arborist because of Mike, because of Kevin, my assistant, because of Brad and because of Wade Marshawn. So we lost Brad last year. We had a tree, arborist position just closed the other day and I'm finally pleased to say that we had some applicants. And I'm finally pleased to say that we had some applicants after one year of looking for an arborist. And I'm excited to hopefully introduce someone new to the team in the next month or so.
Terrific. Good luck with that. Well, I just broke the news to my vice chair that he is the proclamation reader.
Yes, yes.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Nelson.
All right. I got it. All right. So the Town in Needham, twenty twenty two Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting trees, the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas twenty twenty two commemorates the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Arbor Day. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic validity of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the select board of the Town of Needham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty ninth, as Arbor Day in the Town of Needham. And further, we ask all residents to celebrate a hundred and fifty years of Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we encourage all residents to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Have a motion.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're all in favor of Arbor Day. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, Eddie, I just want to thank you for all that you do. When I think of Arbor Day, I think of Fair Oaks and all those trees. And talk about tree-lined streets and other streets in Needham where you just see these beautiful trees and what a difference it makes in these neighborhoods. It reminds me of Broad Meadow. When I was there, we actually did plant a tree. I don't want to date myself. I think it is still there. But we're also given evergreens all to take home. And I think I probably planted mine in the worst place imaginable with my dad saying, what are you doing? You know, it's probably so high now at the old house. But it was just always nice and you remember those moments as a kid and realize how special it is. So thanks for doing that. I thought we had a busy May with town meeting, but your stop signs and the exchange club as a member, I think that's going to be a great event. So look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
I was gonna say, you're packing it all into a week.
Madam Chair, could I just note that Ed is helping us out by serving as acting assistant director of public works for the, for at least the summer? So so he's really got a lot of place.
Thank you for that.
So if I could say one last word about Arbor Day, so that was great hearing the proclamation. So many true things were said there, things that we see, things that were observed. So a line that I heard for Earth Week that I wanted to share that I really liked was we inherit the earth from our ancestors, but we borrow it from our children. And that's the, that's really the heart of this is we we need to make decisions and better decisions for our kids. So it's so important and tree planting is very important. So thank you.
I know that the question of tree bylaws is one that continues to come up and I think is probably going to be back on our goals again next year, similar reasons. Because we borrow from our children.
I was at our Earth Day celebration in Newton and actually was approached many times by Needham residents over there about a tree bylaws. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Our next item you're still here for is the Department of Public Works Summer Project Update. So Ray, can you come join us? Hello there. Well, let me turn it over to you and you can update us. I guess the one observation I would make, I had sent a note a little bit earlier. We've been having some discussion about the shape of our transportation committees that look at a variety of things, including some of the kinds of projects that you're going to be sharing with us tonight. But we've really talked about redoing those committees and that one aspect of that redo will include sort of a consultative advisory role in looking at these projects as they're coming forward. I would note for people in the town right now that the projects you're presenting are projects that have probably already been on the list for at least five years, some of them likely longer. And there's sort of a march, an order of marches, things get closer and closer to the current year. The hope that we would have with the citizens committee would be that it would also maybe help to integrate some of the other things that are going on in other areas in a better way than we're doing right now. But these projects are going forward this summer and so we look forward to hearing about them.
I'd just comment briefly. I'm all excited that this is going to take place with the committees. The DPW is excellent at designing and getting better and constructing. But the full component is where it could need help to integrate. So that's perfect. That's, it's going to be a nice challenge, but it'll be beneficial to the community.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So Eddie, are you?
Yeah, I'll do an introduction if.
It's your new role.
Yes, yes. So it's my pleasure tonight to be before the the board to talk about some summer projects, Parks and Forestry, DPW and Highway specifically. So Ryan and, well, many of us were at a design review team meeting today for the Muzzy site. Bo Finch did a great presentation. And when they started the history of the site, they had a slide from nineteen twenty that was really interesting. But it called out the different values of moving to Needham because it was a time where we were trying to draw people here. And one of the few, one of the few things that was mentioned was great roads. And I thought that was so fitting for tonight, but I hopefully we could share that slide with the board. But the other things are great schools and different things. But I I think Ryan has really done a fabulous job for many decades now. We're really lucky to have him and his team. Like they, like he said, we've really perfected the art of planning ahead, assessing our road and sidewalk conditions and building a capital program that really anybody could pick up and take on because it's really been built to that point. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, these projects have been in the queue for many years. And every year we reassess for funding and for priorities. But I think like Ryan said, and I think as you mentioned with tree bylaws, the more we interact with the public, maybe a tree committee, the more we can get better at our jobs. So I think that is really the future and I and I welcome those future conversations. With that said, I am going to hand it over to Ryan and Miles. I see the PowerPoint up. And Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, I'll give you the floor.
Terrific. So we're going to talk about two projects we're doing. One is funded by Massachusetts Department of Transportation, so mascot under the Complete Street Program. So the design and the construction, which was maximum construction of four hundred thousand. So we chose this project because it was just over four hundred. We've received four hundred thousand. So that's why this project will be going forward. This particular project that we're going to talk about, probably another couple of slides. Under the Complete Streets, GPI was hired by the town to look at pedestrian safety. Several years ago, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, that held workshops and public meetings in this building as well. We also, they also interviewed a lot of us in the, that work for the community that had different knowledge. We came up with a top eleven list. So far, nine of the eleven for the top crossings have been accomplished. Several of them around the high school on Webster Street that were critical. Newman in front of Newman, Hillcrest and off a Broad Meadow Road across Great Plains Out. So it was nine completed. This one will be the most expensive because Harris at Dedham Abbott Harris has geometric improvements that we all know driving through is horrifying. Lot of pedestrian movement. It's a principal arterial, so it's a classic for severe safety. So this has been on our, on our look for probably fifteen or twenty years. So we're finally at that stage. We'll rebuild it this year by geometric improvements. So GPI study, we we held it, we're ready to go. We included from Harris Ave at Dedham Ave to go down towards the Pollard School. So we're going to take it for access ramps and some movement of crosswalks across Harris inside the school zone. So we pulled it all the way down to Pine Wood for the four hundred. So that's really, there's two projects, but they're connected. So we'll address those issues. The only remaining of the eleven is Highland Ave to the crossing at the high school. So this will be ten of eleven, so and the most expensive for construction. That's a limited work. As we know, this, all kinds of roadways, they're skewed angles. So when drivers approach certain ways, because they're skewed, they're not ninety degrees, it's hard to turn. You can't see pedestrians. And it, so there's a high conflict. So in this design of the Dedham Ave Harris, we're going to take some of the intersections, make major geometric changes to try to bring it more ninety degrees. So you have better visibility for pedestrians and bicyclists. That's what this project's all about. It's not so much as it's to slow down cars and give them better visibility and protect the pedestrians for safety, also to reduce the crossings. Across Harris Ave at Dedham is a hundred and forty five feet. That's probably one of the longest unprotected crosswalks that I can imagine. And when we watch Pollard School kids get out, it's a nightmare. So I'm excited about getting this thing done. If we can go to the next slide. So this is the design concept. We hired TEC that took the GPI study that originally designed it. We tweaked it a little bit tighter to do some extra crossings. It's hard to see, but anyway, the Harris Ave is the biggest where Harris Ave meets Dedham Ave. That crosswalk is a hundred and forty five feet as it is today. That island, the center island of grass, we're going to pull it forward in case it would grant it to create a safe median for crossing. So it's protected crossing. So we're going to take it from a hundred and forty five feet of unprotected to about thirty feet on each side. Across Dedham Ave at Harris on what is the southeast corner where it crosses Dedham Ave, that will have an RRFB, which is a rectangular rapid flash beacon, which we've been putting in on around town, especially in the high school on Webster Street. So it's a push the button, the flashes go, gets traffic to stop, hopefully then you cross. Right now it's unprotected. There's also no compliant wheelchair access ramps. So we're technically in violation of the Architectural Access Board and Americans with Disabilities Act because we have crosswalks existing within proper rank ramps. So this design takes care of all of those issues. We're also going to install water quality on Harris Ave inside the grass area to take credit for the runoff, stormwater runoff. We're going to actually percolate it, design it so it perks it lights into the ground and then overflows into the drainage, which is good for the environment. So we've, we've taken complete streets, shared streets, traffic calming, environmental issues and public safety and pushed them all into one, which is really good design. Super. Yeah, it's super. So it hits all the buttons. Otherwise it would be boring, but I get excited when it's like, wow, when you get a win, 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 win. And it's funded by the state. That's perfect. So this is, I'm excited. It's been too long. We're going after a lot more. So if we hit the next slide. So as part of that intersection along down to Harris Ave to from Dedham Ave, past the school to Pine Street, all of those ramps are no longer compliant and we want them to be compliant. If you're in a chair, we need to make them compliant. So that's going to be, they're going to be limited geometric improvements. It's more to make them compliant. There'll be cement concrete with detectable warning strips. The warning strips are also for sight impaired people. So out of respect, you have to look at the whole society. And that's what we're going to take care of as well as if you're pushing a carriage or have any kind of mobility challenges. This will correct everything. We can go to the next.
Madam Chair, just while we're on that slide, the elimination of the cut through Harris, that Stevens, I'm assuming you're going to extend that berm. Is that for safety reasons? Is that the?
It is. It is. And so when we met with the Pollard School leadership, school transportation and the police, fire and others, that was the number one issue for the school and school transportation. So we all went and started watching at different times and on weekends, how traffic's long, how people are using the facility. At school release especially, in the morning, it's not so bad, it's staggered, but when it's released. And in the morning, people are, children are crossing through the bus loop in front of the school, between the buses. And everybody's terrified that at some point it'll be bad. So what they've recommended, we talked about, was closing off Stevens and the crosswalk, which is also unprotected. It's in the street. If we look, it's unprotected. So it's long, unprotected with all kinds of turning movements. Plus the children going through the buses. They're like, can you do something? So that's what we came up with, was to try to seek that, is to cut out the pavement, remove that walkway, reduce people going through, children going through the buses. And so that road would, if you come from down Stevens towards Harris, you could, you would have to take a right turn. Our plan is to engage with the residents I have and I also have on weekends. Most people understand our favor because it's for the children. However, the first stage will block it off, make sure everybody's satisfied and it's no, so that the public's involved. And at the latter stage, we'll pull it out. The first stage is to block it off, put up the signage, observe and then take it out.
When are you thinking you'll block it off?
Within a couple of weeks, like school's still in effect. So within, say, two weeks.
Yeah. So as far as blocking it off, are you going to, I guess, assess and see what impact like that does and see with how that works? And then I know we're going to move forward with this regardless, but just kind of see if there's anything else we should do.
Yes, there's always something learned. Always. So what we've done now is have the crossing guard actually stop all traffic and try to reroute the children. And they said that's the way to go. So they've kind of, we've kind of tested it, but now it's really block it off, reduce the turning movements, remove that crosswalk, which is without doubt exposed and dangerous. And then the the impact though would be twenty four seven is you, cars couldn't come down and cut, take that cut through. It's minor inconvenience, but for the safety and and we think it's worth it. So the next step is to actually block it off, go through that. If if we're told not to, we would probably go to during school hours, have people block off the road because it's that serious.
And I heard you say signs, but as far as blockage, what else are you using too? Is it something that can be moved or is it going to be like, someone can, you know, people are sometimes like, oh, we can move that if it's the.
So there would be barricades across. So when you come down to Harris, because they're all one ways on each island side, we'd put up the one-way arrows and make sure, because it's a change in traffic flow. So we have to be really cautious. We'll oversign it to to make that happen and do the observation. We feel that, that, and talking to most of the butters, that they they'll welcome it. And and so that's our first stage, just to be cautious.
Language sent out through the school, like they, like an email to everyone, let them know this is starting soon. And then maybe the night before, you know, I just know how people are when they don't get enough communication. Yes, okay. Just checking.
So should I go to the next slide? So so as we talked about Dedham Ave towards Pine Wood, it's mostly the curb cut handicap ramps and don't meet. We're going to make those meet. There is going to be a change at Mayo. So we're taking that crosswalk, relocating it so it goes through the center, grass strip, the island. So it's more protected. Right now, some of those crosswalks are built inside those cut throughs, which are exposed to all kinds of turning movements. So that will be relocated for safety and we'll put it through the island. And then that also shows, that's where I was going to talk about the proposal to block Stevens. And the next slide is the end of limited work just after the bus loop. Currently, it's across the opening in the medium. It's exposed. The buses tend to come out, we found from school transportation, talking to the schools. The buses come, exit that loop in the center, lower left, and then go down Pine Wood. That's typically where most of the buses go. So we want to push the walkway to the other side to reduce the conflict. And again, put it through the island so it's better protected. Also, there's there's accommodation for bicycles along the strip, but not bicycles inside the school zone. Because if you create a bike lane, you're not supposed to park on it. So it'll be a shared street. So there's also incorporating bicycles, which is part of the complete street. So it's multimodal. So it's more about pedestrians and bicyclists and quality of life and safety versus vehicles.
Yeah, increasing that.
Yes, increasing that. It's way past due. And so it's supported by the federal government, these standards. For the last fifteen years, it's been a big change from wider travel lanes to narrower, slow down traffic, part of traffic calming and incorporate better safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. So we're all on board with that. Next slide. So this is, this project is Central Avenue. As most know, we've been going down Central Avenue from Gray Plain to towards Honeywell Street. In this particular project, we're incorporating, we have an opportunity to reduce, to solve multiple problems. Once again, the pavement is thirty-six to thirty-seven feet wide. The proposal is to bring it to thirty-two. Reduce the travel lanes from fourteen feet, which is wider than one twenty-eight and Route ninety-five. It's too wide, encourages people's speed. Pull it down to eleven-foot travel lanes with a proper five-foot or greater bike lane. And so as we pulled the curbing in, redo the drainage, we gain gained grass areas at the side of the street, which gives it more residential. That's all part of traffic calming and the psychological. So it's pulling in with the granite curb, tighter travel lanes, increase the grass plots. Most of the way, there's no grass. All the storm water goes into the system, ends up in the rivers. So with the grass plots, it also perks into the ground and reduces the stormwater runoff by about thirty-eight percent, which is huge. Next slide. So the top left is Central Ave. Where we're going to start the project, just just north of Honeywell Street, heading towards Dooton. As you can see, it's a sea of asphalt. As we go uphill to the upper right slide, as we go forward, there's a little bit of grass plots on this, on this travel way, but the pavement's too wide. So it's going to come in two, two and a half feet on each side. The bottom left is, as we go down Central Avenue, this is would be phase two is Parkland. And that's a walkway that we can't use our heavy equipment to do the sidewalk. It's too narrow. It's elevated. So in the years past, they put up a fence. As we pull this road in, we're going to be able to drop that sidewalk, pull it to the street and make it comply. So we can plow it and it's much better travel, safer travel. So a lot of things are going to happen with access, sidewalk improvements, safety. Back to the whole complete streets, traffic calming is part of the project. At the bottom, it's right. So that's a fifty-foot layout. We're going to have grass plots there. So all the runoff that hits the sidewalk will drain into the grass plots unless it's a heavy storm. That's where we get the thirty-eight percent reduction in runoff onto the pavement. And it's a separation of the sidewalks. Next slide.
Can I just, can I ask them a question? I think all of this sounds wonderful. And I guess I'm just concerned because in recent memory, I think a lot of people have been complaining about traffic right through this area with increased traffic from Sunita Williams and so on. And I'm just wondering, while I think it's fabulous that people won't or will be discouraged from speeding, do we have to worry about then there being additional traffic concerns with a narrower roadway?
It's a great question because we discuss it internally constantly and with people who contact that we interact. So the traffic is going to be whatever the traffic is. To slow it down does not mean we want to stack traffic at the next traffic signal. As part of the plan moving forward, this intersection at Honeywell and the Muzzy Project under Bull Finch at Gold Street will put in a traffic signal. Those signals are going to be more modernized. So it pulses traffic. So that it'll slow down people who are going from one traffic signal to the next. Right now, after you get past Honeywell, you have to go to Dooton to get to the next one. So, you know, we're going to pulse the traffic. So it's, it doesn't create more traffic or backup when we pulse it. It's just it drops people's speeds. So when you get to the next traffic signal, but queuing is in those line.
Okay.
Because if you speed to the next one and you have to wait four cycles to get through. And so with modern signals, what we're going to do is pulse it. So it's actually going to process the cars quicker and the pedestrians.
And then depending on the time of day. The 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 following light, I think, past the potential Gould Street light is the one where like at Echo Bridge is is, yes. Is it possible to work in concert with Newton? Because that's where
the stack up occurs.
Backup comes.
Yeah, everybody's speeding. Yeah, absolutely. And and that's a good point because we don't just see it as Needham or or same as if other communities adjacent to us, like the Highland Ave project, it's under construction. The evening traffic coming from Route nine through Newton, if it doesn't get on one twenty-eight, will back up into Needham. So we're actually having ongoing discussions with Mastod and Dooton now. So we upgrade our Highland Avenue. Otherwise it'll create backup. So it has to be all these signals communicate with each other and how they pulse through. They're called intelligent adaptive signals. And so just getting it out of Newton, I mean, out of Needham into Newton, we want to work with them so that they're prepared to upgrade. We don't, traffic creates pollution. And then speeding to the next one is speeding. So it's it's a whole different concept and it actually works for your, the time to get from point A to B would be equal or reduce, but at a lower speed. That's the goal.
Thank you.
Have those conversations been optimistic about, you know, being on the same page with Newton and Mastod about that backup that Heidi was talking about, that area? What have those been like?
Absolutely. So I've been here twenty-nine years last week. And when I first got here, it was all wide roads, fast traffic. Forget about sidewalks. Those were secondary. The whole philosophy for all people in this industry has switched.
Yeah.
Totally. So this is the hottest topic, pedestrians, bicycles, multimodal, how do you process traffic, reduce environment, public safety, adaptive signals. Everybody's
I think we're all in on it.
Yeah, everybody's all in. So the conversations have been switched and they're they're very positive.
You have a goal spot. Truly brings it home here.
So this statement is just part of the mantra for all of us in this industry now. And it's been going on for on a federal level for twenty years and it came to the states. Mastod in two thousand and fourteen made it an objective. They funded Complete Streets in two thousand and sixteen. A lot of conversation has taken place prior to, but it's actually funded so that future jobs, if you want federal state money, you have to construct to these standards. That's so that's the whole push, which is perfect. So Complete Streets is just accessible options of all modes of traffic. So it's a balance and for all abilities. It's that simple. It's not complicated. So for the elderly, to the children, pushing a carrot or or any kind of disability or challenge, you have to look at the whole picture. We should as a society. So it's a quality of life. And it doesn't actually cost more. And that was part of the to slow down the change. And as we go forward, it really doesn't. It's just smarter design to incorporate. So in this project that we're going to be talking about, we're also using all kinds of traffic calming devices. So those are signs, traffic markings, all very inexpensive to to get the drivers to slow down. I've already talked about the stormwater runoff. As we pull the road in, get the grass plots back in, it makes it more residential. The psychology is to slow down. The curbing is a traffic calming technique. It slows down tighter lanes, slows down the traffic from speeding up. And the grass plots that now can go in or be wider will take the rainwater off the sidewalk. So instead of fifty feet of roadway going into the drain system, it's only going to be thirty-two feet, which is thirty-eight percent reduction. It's all the sidewalk will drain into the berm. On snow and ice, because the road is smaller, narrow, there's less snow banks. And now we have wider shoulders. We can stack more snow so we can do a better job of plowing the sidewalks, which is all school zones, does heavy pedestrian traffic. So again, that's, it all works going forward.
Ryan, I have a question. So my fellow board members know that this is one of my pet points. The rapid flashing beacons, I do worry about their effectiveness mainly because so many citizens and young adults never push them. And it's tremendously frustrating to me to know that they have a safety device at their hands that would be very helpful to me as a driver in knowing that they're there to cross the street and they never push the flashing light. Is there any data or research or psychology about how we can
There is.
to actually work to help everybody?
Good point. And that is, there's a lot of publications that we're all reading about. We talked about, I'm also on the Board of Directors with Bay State Roads. That is the educational for municipal groups, state and municipal employees for all things surface. So that's part of the conversation as we look at the data and you're correct, people don't, if you don't push it, it's not going to do anything. And if you push it and don't wait for the cars to actually slow down, that is a deadly crash. So most of the data shows that these things work. If you operate it properly, you have to push it, activate. And before you cross, check the oncoming traffic. So that's an individual responsibility. So that training that we have, we have to push, I think, into the school systems.
Okay.
Where we're asked to go, that this is serious, especially we've had two fatalities a couple of years ago and impacted all of us.
Yeah.
And and so I think that that tragedy can help us move this thing forward, that we're trying to tighten the roads, make it safer. But you also have to take individual responsibility on these things and use what's available.
So I think that's so important. And it's, I'm always struck when I feel like I'm almost hitting somebody and it's dusk and just they haven't pushed a button and they're dressed in black and
Right. My kid's all dressed in black. Yeah, it's horrible.
I'm sure I always like the people that push the buttons at the traffic signals and then I jail walk right after.
Yeah, no, I I am with Justin McCullin on that one. I never push it unless I'm I'm also thinking, as we were talking about aphorisms, there was something I retweeted the other day that a woman talked about learning to drive with her dad. And on the road, there was a bicyclist and they passed a bicyclist and her father would point to the bicyclist while she was driving and say, what is that? And she would say that bicyclist is my responsibility.
Oh, that's
Such an important point for all of us who are driving, you know.
So I think I'm probably one of the elders in the room. So when I grew up in seventies and we drove, we all drove too fast. We had those big cars. They had rear wheel drive with big engines. So in the snow, you were all over the place. And it was a wreck. And as we go forward and I have kids, I tell them just how better it is because like it's too restricted. Oh, no. People were getting hurt, people that were seriously injured or fatalities because of our society. So we're moving in the right direction. And and so one of the things that to bring into the to the youth is it's cool to to be respectful like that, all people. And if you're in a car, your responsibility absolutely is allow that that pedestrian, that bicyclist space. And if you have to wait, you do. So those are the great conversations that we're having as adults with parents to pass on.
Yeah. Great. Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. This sounds like a slam dunk. I love it. Yeah, on Central Ave, we're increasing grass stretch, right? Two feet in.
At at minimum, two, two to three feet, depending on on where we're at. So they're going to be quite wide, these little.
Yeah, okay. Are they going to be tree lined? These segue.
Absolutely. Thank you for adding. So yes, I was waiting for that plug, but yes, Ryan, I talked about that. And I have a very vested interest in Central Ave because I've had fun Central Ave. So yes, we will be looking forward to a lot of burns and planting as many trees. Again, right tree, right location. So under distribution lines, flowering trees. Where we have the open space, we can look for large shade trees. So yeah, we'll really have transformative impacts for the community, for everybody that lives on that road and the the community in general. So, yeah. And we get credit for NFTs. So that's always important, the stormwater.
Sounds amazing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate the update and appreciate all your work to make it happen. Our next item is the Hunter Ridge Road Street Acceptance. Tom Ryder is up next. Do we have another one?
I have my project too. I'm sorry, sorry.
Me again.
You again. Stay here.
All right.
That was real smooth.
All right. I'll quickly go through some of the Arbor Day plans because we kind of talked about them with the proclamation. So you can see a gold picture of us there at the Mitchell School a couple of years ago, or actually last year. We spoke about the significance of the day. Thank you, Miles. We can hop along a couple of slides, I think. It goes and impacts, you know, kind of Ryan hit at home there, you know, tree planting, so important, environmental stewardship, awareness, education. So again, try and inspire the kids to really think about the future, as I said, with the, we're borrowing this earth from them. So to have them vested in solutions is really important. And it's amazing to hear kids nowadays, like we've come so far, like Ryan said, the ideas some of these young kids have and and are putting them into action are really amazing. So stormwater, we can't say that enough these days, especially here in town, as we've seen the 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 teardowns and the larger homes, people don't realize that expanded home, rain hits that, it goes off the roof and usually it lands in those storm drains. So it's a big problem and it's something that we're always talking about with roads, with trees, with Arbor Day, with kids, with education. So and then habitat restoration, carbon sequestration, really the buzzword this past decade. And then we don't want to forget aesthetically pleasing. It's it's beautiful to go through the streets nowadays and see the red buds, the cherries, the the even the flowering pear trees downtown that everyone loves for about a week and then and then they're gone. Next slide, please. All right. So last, we're going to wrap it up with Parks and Forest Street project. So I'm going to call these the big three. Town Common renovation is going to be our biggest biggest project of the year and really our focus right now. So we did have a bid opening two weeks ago. We have, we're in the contract award stage with Cataldo Inc. Cataldo has done several jobs in towns. We're very familiar with their work, the reservoir, Newman Playing Fields, the Boardwalk at Eastman and so many others, Brooks and Culver Cleaning and engineering projects. So they're excited, we're excited. You know, when we asked the allocation of money, we were worried about this project. We're all worried about inflation, about cost increase, about supply chain. And this is no no different than anything else. We were able to afford the project, but we are tight on funding. So we are actually looking to do a deduction off the contract right away to free up some funds. So Ryan, myself, Tom and others have talked to Beta about some things that we had in mind to get our costs in line and actually give us enough money to have some contingency on this project. So as far as work starting, again, contract stage right now, but I had a meeting with Cataldo yesterday. They are looking hopefully to start staging equipment materials by the end of May. So much more to come. An incredible design by Beta. Really excited about this. As I said to everybody at Tom Meeting and others, you know, this is our front yard. So I couldn't have been more pleased with how the design came out. I'm excited about this job and it's going to be a lot of work, but a lot more to come. As you all know, temporarily with the common taking off this this summer and fall, we're going to be using Greensfield for the farmer's market. We have the tents and the parklets. So again, we're hoping to accommodate people that want to do outdoor dining down the street and then at Eaton Plaza. So we're trying to be mindful and accommodating. And we hope that people find those spaces just as suitable as the common while we work on it. You know, Kate will laugh. I think I've talked about the comment for the eleven years I've been here. So just really happy that we've gotten there and that we that everything worked out. So thank you for your support. So thank you for your support with that. So we'll go to our second of the big three and that's Claxton Field Design. We have been working with Weston Sampson for several months. We've had some Park and Rec meetings, a lot of discussion on this project. I think going in, we all had visions of more than what we're gonna be able to do there. And I think, you know, a lot of people kind of said, well, what did you expect? It was an old landfill. And we knew that, we, we expected that. But I think through this design, we had to do borrowings and different things. So we understood more of what this old landfill was because God bless my old neighbor, Tony Sefalo, who lives right behind me used to. And unfortunately, I think his house depends on sold matter. Think it's gonna get torn down, but he, he capped the, the landfill and he used to tell me stories. I used to sit down with Tony and my kids and we'd sit in this kitchen for hours and he'd tell me stories about his work with the DA eight there. But those were older days and we didn't do the capping the way that probably we do it nowadays. So I think this project allows us to do things now reverse time. And we're talking about putting a liner, regrading, fixing things up. But I think the vision of scoreboards and lights are, are off the table because we would trigger the DEP process. Because to excavate soils at the depths that we need to, we know that we'll kind of come across. And I'm gonna use the word contaminated, not to scare people, but when I say contamination, ash, glass, plastic shards, different old materials that used to be backfilled at that dump. So I think what we've done now is again, reassess where we are and we're gonna do the topical improvements. We're starting to focus in on that and we'll be back before Park and Rec soon with some design iterations to share with the groups. As you all saw and probably read a couple of weeks ago, we did close down the playground. Why? Because again, the course of this design, we had experts out there, we did the boring. What we found on the playground side was the tailings were kind of put there when they capped the landfill. But they only put the tailings there. When I say tailings, meaning the leftovers. So again, the, the cover of, of soil and turf was a lot less there in some spots, four to six inches. So I think we all aired on the side of caution. We don't want, we've all seen young kids at a playground. We don't want them digging and then coming across shards of glass or plastic. So we all agreed disassemble and cut and cap that area. And I think that'll be consideration by Park and Rec for the future as they assess all playgrounds in town. But that was really the impetus be, be on that action. And again, more to come. It's gonna be beautiful when we're done and again, maybe a little bit different than we all thought, but bear with us, we'll be there. Lastly, we're just getting started, just awarded a design contract to Time Bond to look at the McLeod field improvements. Miles pulled up, or someone pulled up a slide that kind of showed the PowerPoint that kind of really embodied all the things that we were trying to solve on this job. And again, all of you that have been there have seen some of these issues, the connectivity to the turf, as you can see in the bottom right slide. As spectators go to high school athletic contests on the synthetic, they walk across a baseball field. So again, we talked about a dedicated walkway where people could access those field. Again, as Ryan mentioned, accessibility, having that open to the public. Player safety at, uh, safety issues. So again, I should probably even put spectator safety issues. If you've ever been to a baseball game at McLeod, nobody parks their car along third base because the ball smashed windows. So, and people don't like to watch the game there. So again, I think some of those issues will be solved by either netting or additional fencing, higher fencing. Maybe formalizing a pad so we could put a bleacher pad and a bleacher there for people have a dedicated place to watch the games. You know, I came in right after the Field of Dreams and I'm so grateful for all the people before me that raised those funds to do such an incredible job at Memorial in the Fazio. However, there were some issues with the design. Giel did a nice job on the design, but I don't know if they've ever designed national grass fields because there were some mistakes made. So elevations, they shot all the elevations towards the clay, meaning they brought the stormwater onto the playing surface. That's a no-no. My buddy Dave Miller at Fenway Park was shuttered if he saw some of the grading jobs on, on these fields, but we'll fix that with this project. Lacrosse wall gift that's out in left field, it's not in the bottom slide because it was most recent gift to Park and Rec. But we're gonna paint that, we're gonna make that nice, we're gonna put synthetic turf to formalize the stonedust that was there. We spoke about fencing, we spoke about spectators. And again, additional possibilities yet to be determined or discussed tomorrow night. We will be sharing and presenting myself and Time Bond at the Park and Rec meeting and hoping to have a good crowd. Park and Rec Commission Athletics and others so that we can hear, so that we can get to the design work and, and get started on this project. Both projects, I would hope they would be designed and cost estimates so they'd be ready for the budget cycle in the fall, depending on what we want to do. And a lot going on. So I, I thank you for your time tonight. It's nice to see you all and looking forward to the summer.
And I've just been asked the town comment, what's the timing on when we expect to see the, the project actually starting? And when do we expect to see it wrapped?
Yep. So in, in the bid document itself, we identified the time to complete and the identified time by the low bidder was 300 days. Again, they're hoping to mobilize and stop by June 1st, hopefully at the latest. And we, you know, I think originally we had all thought about, geez, would be great to have this as a summer project and everybody comes back from vacation. We got the brand new comment. Well, COVID hit and I think everything's changed. And I think the biggest change is deliverables and material supplies. I think some of the materials in this job are 22 weeks out upon shop drawing approval. So I think again, this is gonna stretch out a little bit longer than we had originally anticipated. But I think we've got to remember that the end is where we want to be and we'll, we'll get there. So I think it would be hopefully at this time next year, madam chair, I hope that we'll be finished.
That would be good.
That'd be a great Arbor Day celebration. I'll tell you that much.
Meanwhile, there is a tent and it's over on Greensfield and hopefully people will be starting to use it. Will it get lights on it again this year?
I don't know. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that, but yeah, that'd be nice. With, with those, there must have been solar lights last year, right?
I know we had lights last year. We don't have lights this, no lights this year.
We look forward to.
That's a bummer. So then you can't really eat in it late at night. We have this beautiful new LED street.
Yes, it is pretty lit there. Yeah.
So do you think it will work for the teenagers in town? Because I mean, the, the tent was really such a popular place late at night. I was thinking about that as I drove by in the tent.
I hope the kids will stay out of the playground as opposed to, you know.
Yeah.
Rather have them in the tent where the police can keep an eye on them as opposed.
And the park lit is right there too. Okay. All right.
Madam Chair. Just on the cloud and the softball aspect of it, this will help solve that. Or I know it's still in the discussion, right? But that is one of the, one of the thoughts.
Yeah, it's a great question. So I think again, you know, through the, the course of discussion through Park and Rec meetings on Claxton, we, we basically flushed out, they were a little short on softball fields in town. And I think tomorrow night, the purpose is to hear from Park and Rec. We want to hear as to what they want to see out of this project. But we also want to hear from athletics and youth groups and we want to hear people's opinions. I think what we're gonna hear that there might be consensus that there might be consideration to give on converting this from a baseball field into a softball scheme. And I think what we heard through the design at Claxton was it'd be nice to have the girls JV and varsity team at the Fazio with track, with baseball, with everybody that's there. Secondarily being that lights, modern light system, a scoreboard and some of the accoutrements we thought we could achieve at the former landfill aren't on the table. Well, we have those capacities at the phases. So I think that's gonna be what I'd like to see come out of the discussion tomorrow night, but you'd never know. I had a weird inquiry today about tennis courts at McLeod. So you never know. Yes, stay tuned.
Well, thank you for your flexibility.
I think we know that's gonna come out of that meeting tomorrow about softball and converting. And I, and I think we know from prior discussions that is something that the town is really looking at. So.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
I think so too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All set?
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Madam Chair, move the appointments and consent.
Is there a second?
Second of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous vote? Thank you. Tom, we are ready.
Yes.
I know you've been more than ready for a long time. And, and this is again, Hunter Ridge Road, which we have discussed and it's now gone through its formal process for you to return to us.
Yes. So this is the Hunter Ridge Road layout. And this meeting, we are going to sign the layout and I draw pens. That's, we'll hopefully, we'll not smudge, but don't check it out.
Even though I'm left-handed, I can't drag my hand to the ink. Cause that's what you're telling me. Okay.
Same here. So. Mary and I will.
Be careful.
Be careful.
So after this, we bring the plan to the town clerk's office. We'll go through town meeting for the acceptance and then in about a month, I'll come back with the Form Three, which will be the recording paperwork. So.
If I missed this whole process with accepting the roads.
We haven't done it in a while, right?
Yeah, I'm like, I do not recall this. Well, I was gonna say definitely. So is there anything?
Was the last was, last one.
Is there anything else that you need to tell us ahead of time? And I think everybody knows, we've already discussed that all the residents of the street are in favor of this.
Yes, they petitioned to have accepted and we did our inspections and prepared the, the layout plan. And that's, so we've already been through the Form Two, which was we notified the, the butters and the town clerk that this has come to, for acceptance. And it's posted in the warrant article. So. So step three is in about a month. So.
Then I would welcome a motion.
To that the board of vote to approve inside, and sign the acceptance plan of Hunter Ridge Road.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, this, the question came up in my room last night and I think I had the answer to it, but it's why aren't other, we haven't done this as we just stayed in a while. Why aren't other roads moving for this type of acceptance? And I know sometimes, and you can explain it better than I can, but they are not in compliance, right? They don't fit what the town sees as acceptable or the conditions are met. So could you just speak to it because people were a little bit confused why this is going forward and maybe their neighborhood is not?
So first, the first step is it would have to be a petition. So they have to be interested in giving this to become a public way. And then we would do our inspections and then determine what will need to upgrade. So in cases where the conditions of the road is, you know, too narrow or, or too rutted or drainage problems or curbing issues. We would have to figure out what the cost is for the upgrades and then assess a benefit for the, for the property owners. So, so, so that will be like the first step petition. And then everyone on the street would have to agree or more than 50%. But if you only have 50% people agreeing to the road, is it, do we really want to have it accepted? So, so more than a 50% agreement and then we could start the process.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Tom, it's also the case, Tom, correct, that some developers construct roads that they never intend to be accepted because they don't want to meet the compliance standard to set. You talk about that.
True. Yes, that's true. And in one of the, and for this particular road and, and as all roads that are gonna be accepted, that has to do with the subdivision. We asked the planning board whether, whether they're gonna make a recommendation and they have for this one as well. There are roads that playing boards, this will never gonna recommend approval for town, for town ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I am thinking of one road that I have seen during my tenure as a select board member, where the neighborhood in fact was not in agreement about wanting it to be accepted. So that is sort of the other side of this. So that the idea that the neighborhood does have to agree and that the road needs to be compliant are really two base issues. All right. So we have a motion, a second, other questions?
One question. There's no sidewalks on Hunter Ridge?
There's no sidewalks.
Is it time required to, is that like a, when you get time?
Yeah, it's, we, we do look to see if this has sidewalks on both sides or one side. In this case, for, for Culsack, this is a case where, you know, Ryan's looking at not increasing the amount of load of, of repairing sidewalks throughout town. So this is a bit acceptable. To have no sidewalks.
Thank you.
If there's no further question, then all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous vote? Thank you so much. Oh, we need to sign. We're gonna go over there. Over to your side. Okay, Chris next. Right. We'll let it dry. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tom. We're not gonna mess up those signatures.
Yeah, we're gonna leave it there and I'm gonna take care of it.
Okay. Great. I hear it's gonna stay there.
To let it air dry.
Just, you can leave it right there. Don't worry about it. Just leave it right there. Let it get dry.
Tom's worried about the weather.
Yeah.
As should be.
There you go. Thanks. All right. Our next item tonight is the town manager.
Madam Chair. I was gonna add to your aphorisms and it actually came from a select board meeting that we had over pedestrian safety. And I've never forgotten it. I, I don't remember the woman, but what she said was, when I'm a driver, I need to remember that I'm a runner. And I've never forgotten it because it's, it's like your bike because. Is that, thank you. So I am a sometimes runner and an often driver and yes. The first item, Madam Chair, is to ask the board to approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Needham Police Superior Officers Association for FY22 and then for 23 through 25. This is a very similar contract to the Needham Police Officers, Needham Police Union contract that the board approved at your last meeting on April 13th. This unit is a supervisory unit under state law. The supervisors at this level need to be in a separate unit under collective bargaining. And there are three employees in this unit and they're salaried command staff of the, of the department. So the, the agreement is very similar to that, that we had proposed for the police union. And as we had mentioned, we're trying to achieve some of our key objectives, internal parity, pay that will help us recruit and retain officers. Recognizing the increased responsibilities and obligations and requirements on police officers under the Police Reform Act. That's particularly true for command staff because they have to actually oversee it and do all the work in terms of record keeping for those. And again, the, the town, the boards at least, and our, the chief and my and the staff's high, strong recommendation that we remove ourselves from the civil service system and create a locally based recruitment and promotion system that will help us increase the diversity of our department and also increase the number of candidates. As we're having a hard time, there are fewer candidates for people who want to be police officers. We want to make sure we have those who are at the best level. Again, I would, I would, I would note that over 6% per year for four years is significantly higher than our sustainability benchmark. For these, these years, for, for most years, we are right at it or below it. And so we really, we know it's a, it's a, it's a hard ask, but we really think that achieving these objectives at this time for both the union and the town, it makes sense. And we commit to being back in the, in the realm of where we need to be. But as most unions or most situations, there, there are times when there are objectives that need to be made or, or there are needs that we need to be met through the agreement and we think this is one of those years.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Needham Police Superior Officers Association for FY22 and FY23 through FY 2025.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
All right. So, um, thank you. So at the legal room and voters. So at the, um, League of Women Voters Event last night, this came up. And there was a town meeting member who knew so much about this, I was astounded. His name was Dan Matthews and he went on at length about it. And he was great and for all the reasons, as you said, this is a, this is a great, a good deal. It checks all the boxes and, um, so I'm happy we just, we could pass it.
Thank you. Um, I think when thinking about this agreement, um, from a long-term, um, outlook, and I think about the word hope and hope for me is defined as helping other people evolve. So when I think about that and our opportunity to look and think outside the box and getting away from keeping Needham, Needham all the time and having a more diverse representation of people who may be interested in serving in a town like Lea, like Needham, um, and not having to, you know, have to have lived here the whole life or I feel like the things that we're putting on the table, um, makes me, I guess, excited and, and, and thinking that we are moving in the right direction by broadening our horizon and looking to add more value to this town and not saying it doesn't have it, but to have a, to, to kind of take a step back and think about how our future, how we best represent our future. I think it's what we do now and, and leaving civil service and, and providing more opportunities to people that may not have had it. So, um, I know we said something about the, you know, the increase may seem a little steep, uh, to begin with. Um, but for a long-term positive benefit, I feel like this could be really good for our town. Um, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Then, um, moving into the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions, five zero.
I imagine town meeting member Matthews will have something to say.
He doesn't like this.
That would be welcome.
Yes.
I haven't heard him talk much, is he a new town meeting member?
Yeah, apparently.
All right.
The second item, Madam Chair, is, um, we're asked that the board approve and authorize the town manager to sign the ten-year license agreement with the Needham Community Farm. Um, I, as you know, the community farm has been, um, working with the Community Preservation Committee for years on, um, funding and raising money for upgrades and, um, has, uh, for a while been seeking a little bit more permanence, um, with respect to stability. So the prior license was a one-year, uh, term with the ability to annually renew. They have asked for, and I do recommend, a ten-year agreement that would give them some stability where they're at and it could really help them in terms of, um, raising capital and, and seeking grants and also fundraising. The important thing is, the license agreement between the town and the farm is a license and by state law, that means it has to be terminatable by the town at will. So having ten one-year extensions or one ten-year agreement really is distinction without a difference at this point. And I, I do feel it would help them, um, in their, uh, in their practices. They've also, uh, the prior version of the lease didn't contemplate the construction of growing beds. In fact, construction of anything had to come back to us for approval. So this one would specifically allow those growing beds and it would allow them to sublight, sub license, um, to, sub-license them to, um, members of the, of the public residence who want to go and farm them, which is their Community Preservation Act article in, in the warrant. And then finally, they, um, we're, we're seeking sort of blanket approval to have signs and we've, we've limited that to consistent with the, the signed by law and also, um, consistent with the operation of a farm and, and related, um, items like that. So upon that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Um, I moved that the board vote to approve and authorize the town manager to approve the new ten-year license agreement with Needham Community Farm.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions?
This is great.
I think we've been in favor of this for a long time, many of us, so.
Madam Chair, there, um, an astute reader of your packet, um, notified me that there's a slight typo and that when we, when we sign this, we will, um, fix the typo and initial all the pages. So in case anybody contacts you, we are, we're on it.
We're on it, terrific, thank you. If there's no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, five zero, thank you.
Madam Chair, there are a few articles that would need revisiting. First would be Article ten in annual town meeting warrant. Um, the board may wish to take a position on the proposed motion to amend that's to be offered by the finance committee. That would add a million dollars to, um, line it in five retire insurance and insurance liability.
Will we support that amendment?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Or us, have the finance committee attend here. Um, do we need to take a separate vote to support the article with it amended? Or is that inherent?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I might, for the moment, Madam Chair, if it makes sense, skip over the Emery Grover and, um, just, uh, go to the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund.
Thirty-one, yes.
See if the board wants to offer a motion.
Is there a motion for Article thirty-one to appropriate for the Athletic Improvement Fund in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars as proposed by the finance committee?
So moves.
A second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just note that it's an additional fifty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six, just.
Equates to the eighty-five.
Eighty-five, six, fifty-nine, yeah.
No further discussion? Um.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have extensions, five zero. Marcus is asking if he needs to redo his video. Can we just put a note next to his video that says that we amended it to the increased amount? Or what, um, are we voted?
There's a couple of options. We were planning to post and mail select board's positions, so I could put it in there.
Okay.
Also, at town meeting, you will have three minutes to get up at the beginning, so.
And talk about the amendment, I can.
Yeah, so that might be the best way.
Okay, and everybody will be there, so that'll.
Yeah. Um, and finally, if it makes sense, Madam Chair, perhaps Article three of the special before you turn to the Grover, which is the, um, collective bargaining agreement between the town and the police superiors.
Is there a motion to adopt the, um, bargaining agreement between the town and the police superiors? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Okay.
It brings you to every room.
Now we're back to Emery Grover. All right, so the finance committee came in this evening, uh, Mr. Lewis is still here. Mr. Conley has gone home, I think, for the evening, or maybe he's still watching us. Um, their request was for us to make a switch in the financing, um, from the four-point-five million dollars of free cash to move that to four-point-five million dollars of debt. Uh, with an understanding that we should expect that the four-point-five million dollars of free cash will be moved into the Debt Service Stabilization Fund in the fall, at Fall Town Meeting, which is the next time that we can effect that change.
It actually have to be the spring.
It would have to be the spring.
Free cash wouldn't be certified until after the.
So it goes back into the cycle and it will wait a whole year? Okay, you have long memories. We have long memories, yes, we do. Um, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would just say at this time, I'm not inclined to change my vote. Um, I know the finance committee is meeting Wednesday, I look forward to their discussion, but, um, I'm not yet persuaded that this is proper to do and I think we have a prudent plan at the current, that, that the, uh, current layout here, so I'm not inclined to change my position on this article, but I look forward to the finance committee's discussion, um, and hearing what they have to say as a board.
Marcus?
Yeah, also, I just, I'm looking forward to that discussion, just to understand more the, the long-term benefit. And I know, um, we spoke about it earlier today, but it's something that intrigues me, um, because in the future, I feel like it is best to kind of outweigh the present and the future and making sure that we're aligned. Um, so we're getting the best benefit out of the money that we're spending. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in learning more because from what I heard today and something, you know, to digest a little bit more on, it, it feels like that it could be, um, a benefit to do that, even if it's not right this second. Um, I think hearing more, understanding more, um, would be definitely a benefit with the way that was phrased. Um, and I'm, um, intrigued to learn more about that.
I'm just curious how this moves forward. So if we decide that we want to stick to our plan, the finance committee comes to a different decision at their discussion tomorrow, um, how does that move forward and get reconciled to town meeting?
So I could answer, but I'll let Kate.
Oh, they would, they could make a motion to amend. So, so it would ultimately be town meeting making the decision on the floor?
If they do make the motion to amend, our, our motion would stay as the main motion on the floor.
Okay, right.
Right, and that's what town meeting would have as the main motion and then they could bring forward a motion to amend that would get to be able to.
And then Madam Chair, we could weigh in on that motion to amend at that time, if we wished.
Yeah.
To see where we stood.
At town meeting?
At town meeting.
Okay, got it.
If we wished.
So. No. Um. I think my sense at this point is somewhat similar to Matt's. I do, I, I think that this is, um, you know, it's an interesting question. I, I'm not sure how material the change is to the big picture for the town. Uh, we do know pretty clearly what our next series of projects are. We know that whether we use free cash now or whether we use four-point-five million dollars from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund at some point in the future for the school projects, the school projects are still going to push the limits of our policy, our debt policy. So, um, that is going to require discussion when we come to financing those school projects, um, under any condition that has been foreseen as far as I'm aware. Um, that doesn't mean we won't do those projects. It doesn't mean that we haven't ever exceeded that ten percent before. We have chosen to exceed the ten percent for limited periods of time. And it means that when we do make that decision, we make it with awareness that we're making that decision and that we understand what our commitments are at that point. Um, so I think my sense is, in an ideal world, we would go forward with the article as it is currently drafted, um, which is an article that town meeting is expecting, um, and with a financing plan that has been discussed for town meeting that people are aware of and, um, that, uh, my sense is that people are prepared to support. So that would have been my sense right now. I'm, I'm looking to see if there's any, anybody who feels differently and would like to argue that we should amend.
No, I would just say, I wish it was January.
Right.
And we could hash this out and figure it out, like Josh is saying, talking about generationally. You know, we have funds now, are we paying for the future? But I don't think I have a problem with that.
It also seems like if we, if we.
I want to understand what Kevin, it's like, so it's a more.
Well, we have the funds now and are we gonna gift the jet, future generations a debt, somewhat less debt in the future? And I don't have a problem with that. I think we should, if we can do this now, we should do it this now, this way.
Yeah, I, I, understanding that this is my first foray into this. It, it seems like not using the cash to pay what we can pay now buys us twice as much debt in the future. Right, right. I understand that we're spreading it amongst more generations. But if we can ultimately pay less, because we can, not because, you, you know, we're, we're lucky to be able to do it, then I, I agree with Kevin, I, I kind of think we should. Um, we're, we have a lot of debt on tap, I don't know that we need to add to it for a relatively small project or relatively small amount.
Well, and I want to be clear that we are all in complete agreement, I think, the finance committee and the select board, that this free cash that we have, that's the result of our carefully shepherding our resources throughout the pandemic, is cash that should be applied to a one-time use, like a, a major building. You know, that it's not something that we're going to take and use for recurring purpose, well, we will not have that cash in the future. So that we would be.
But it does seem like whether we use it for this or whether we use it for the rooftop, uh, system, it is a bit of, it, it's, it's just a bit of optics, really, like it, it's reasonably in, within the same timeframe and it's reasonably the same amount of money. So, we, let's just move forward without the extra debt on our back, I guess, is my opinion.
I think the assumption from Tim Tom, and I, if I'm getting this wrong, I just want to understand, is that to do that and then also be able to fund those as well is why they're making that suggestion to do. I just want to.
So, is that, one of these will be funded with debt?
Yep.
And one of these will be funded with cash?
Okay.
And the question is, do you fund the first one with debt and the second one with cash? Or do you want, fund the first one with cash and the second one with debt, which is the current plan that's actually laid out?
I guess I, I don't, I don't know that I understand the ramifications of the, of the, the difference.
I don't think that there's anybody who sits here tonight that can tell you definitively what that is because it depends on future interest rates and the world is a volatile place right now. So, um, you know, there, at some point hindsight will tell us what might have been the perfect decision. But I would say, at this point, I don't think you let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We know that we need to do this building and we are going to pay for it. I, I hope we're all in agreement about that, we are going to do this building and we are going to pay for it. All right, and, um, it seems that we have a plan that's been presented to the town and socialized. My recommendation would be that, and stick with it.
Madam Chair, I would agree, you know, again, I want to do, I listen, things can change, but we have had this plan in place and, you know, as we talked about earlier, it's always been, I think, our goal, maybe not finance committee, uh, as a whole, but to use cash to pay down debt, so there's just less obligation. And I think this follows that plan, if it's going to change, the discussion we should have. But at the moment, uh, this is a good plan and, um, you know, I give credit for crafting this plan and, uh, to the town manager, finance director, this board, um, and the finance committee, and they really, so.
A, a, and, and I could be clear, if we came up with the other plan back in January and we'd been riding it all, all spring, we'd be fine with that plan too. So the question is just making the change really at this point, I think, with it. All right, so with that, I'm not looking at my list, have we already voted Emery Grover? Do we need to?
We voted.
We voted.
We voted.
So we are done with Emery Grover and we do not need to re-vote? Thank you. Does that close all of our warrant articles? Any other questions relating to town meeting?
Only that the board will be posted for six forty-five on Monday and Wednesday in case something comes up or, um, there's something I missed, but I think, I'm pretty sure you're clear.
Okay, great. Kate, you have other items as part of your town?
Just two quick announcements, um, our, our favorite Little League parade in opening day is back. Um, and, uh, it's this Sunday, hopefully it'll be beautiful weather. That's, that's something that I always try to get to when I can. And then, um, the League of Women Voters, uh, actually, last night, and, uh, told me about a project that's been going on with the eleventh graders at the high school, which is the High School Civics Showcase. And they'll be having that June eleventh, which is a Saturday here at Powers Hall. And they've been doing projects to learn about government and we'll be presenting them, sort of like a science fair, but for government.
So we can come and walk around?
Yes.
Oh.
So I believe we all received an invitation today?
Yes, I think we sent it to.
I was gonna say, I know I did see that on some email.
So that'll be out and we'll, we'll make sure it's in the newsletter and things like that, so.
That'll be great, good. Anything else, is that all of it? And that's good. Um, let me move to, uh, a board discussion. I want to just give an update on our dangerous dog. Um, the board will recall that at our last meeting, we had, no, not our last meeting, our meeting before last.
Yes.
Okay, at our last meeting, we had a dangerous dog hearing regarding, uh, Axel from two thirty-three West Street. Um, at that point, the board issued a number of orders, um, to the dog owner. And, um, we required that Axel be confined to the premises of the owner and that when not securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area, um, that we described what that pen needs to look like, that it needs to have a secure roof. All right, and that if it has no floor secured to the sides and the sides have to be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. So there's a whole structure defined, that a fence sufficient to prevent escape be erected around the premises. Uh, when removed from the premises, uh, for some reason, that Axel shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained by an adult whose eighteen years or older and describe the chain that's to be used. Required that Axel should be neutered, um, unless the owner provides written evidence, um, that a veterinarian is of the opinion that Axel is unfit for such, um. That a veterinarian is of the opinion that Axel is unfit for such, such an operation. That a behavior analysis be conducted on Axel, that Axel's owner provide proof of insurance in amount not less than a hundred thousand dollars. That Axel's owner pay all the veterinary bills resulting from the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two incident. Or bills pre, give us, reimburse the victim's dog's owner for bills previously paid. If applicable with, in fourteen days of receipt of this order. And that she provide the chief of police a weekly update in writing on the status relating to Axel and each specific condition included in this decision. And that all prior orders that we had remain in full force. Which required that the owner provide proof of additional skilled training, which we had asked that training continued. And take additional steps to secure the house to ensure there's no additional inadvertent releases of the dog outside the home. What I'm going to report to the, the board is that at this point, the dog owner is out of compliance with our orders. We have yet to receive any written updates from the owners. It is now two weeks. After our hearing, so I would have expected to have received our second update from the dog owner at this time. I am not in a position to be able to tell you that any of these conditions that we stated have been complied with. All right. None of that information has been provided by the dog owner to the town. The lawyer for the dog owner had requested that we move our May tenth hearing to another date. At this point, given the lack of compliance, I am actually not inclined to move the hearing. I'm not inclined to commit the board to an additional meeting. For this purpose, given the non-compliance of the dog owner. But I am open to hearing your discussion on that matter. Marcus.
So has there been any communication at all with us or to the town since that? Just nothing, just radio silence? I just want to be sure, like if we're not going to. About, by that request and move the meeting, that the reason we're not doing that is because nothing has been done to our knowledge. To warrant us to make accommodations for that meeting.
So the animal control officer has been in touch with the dog owner, but was that his initiative? That was counsel, counsel has contacted the attorney and our office has contacted the dog owner. We have received nothing.
Thank you.
So when animal control was in touch with the dog owner, has she like made any of these appointments? For example, for neutering the dog or, and I mean, I wouldn't expect her to have installed a fence by now, but like has she. Reached out and gotten any of that stuff started? I don't have any of that information.
I think my understanding was that the animal control officer. Had visited the home.
Yes.
And that the dog owner was not home at that time.
That's right.
Madam Chair, just to, I, I have, you know, that was a courtesy to move the hearing, but. To me, this is an issue that of safety and I'm not inclined to move anything at this. Don't even say this moment. I'm not inclined to move the hearing. I'm gonna adjust the schedule. I just had a question as far as non-compliance. Is there a fine or a per diem that we can impose from now until? That hearing if, if you do not receive the weekly update or. Upon a visit, there was shown to be further non-compliance. Is there a per diem?
I can ask. I, I don't believe there's a fine enumerated in the bylaw which would have to have, but I can see if there's something.
Yes. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I was gonna say along with that, Matt, I just don't know at this point what that would do if it's not serious enough. From what it seems like to have done these things, you know, how much more would that do? I feel like we're at a point now where it, it almost feels like. This, the severity of this is not taking, is not. Not saying that it doesn't matter to the dog owner, but it just really feels like we are not. Being taken seriously in, in the, in, in how, the different instances and what has it done to the community. It just feels like something isn't right about this and, and I think at this point a fine isn't going to make it better. So that's just my thought on that.
So I think it doesn't hurt to understand.
That's what I was just.
Absolutely. Okay, yeah, right. Okay, I understand.
But, but, but I would agree. I, I think we're all concerned about the seriousness with which the owner is taking this. Kevin?
Thank you. Um, yeah, let's keep the hearing on May ten. I would not move it. I'm thinking that poor neighborhood. They, they seem like they're terrified and, you know, I mean, we can't just let this keep going on and on and keep them. At risk and in fear. So what I think we should need to resolve this.
All right. So we will continue and let the. Counsel for the dog owner know. Thank you, Kate. Are there any committee reports? If there are not, then I will just note for all of you, we are back here in the select board chambers. We're planning to be here for our next meeting, I believe also. Do we have a big hearing? It's a dog hearing. Have to go back upstairs for the dog hearing.
Before we move away from committee reports, I just wanted to note that I was hoping to join the housing.
So we had some discussion about that. In fact, today, we have written, the planning board actually makes those appointments. We have written to the planning board. We are hoping that they will make that appointment.
Next week.
At a soon date.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? All right. Then I would welcome a motion to go into executive session, not to return to public session.
Madam Chair, I move under exception six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. The chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of public law.
And the chair so declares.
Not return to open session prior to adjournment.
Is there a second? All right. Any discussion? Heidi?
Hi.
Marcus? Kevin? Matt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are. Going to the second session.